Okay. It's seven o'clock and I'm calling this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. So, the first item on our agenda is discussion of a dog park at Herbert Park. And Jason Steinis is a student, he lives in Roxbury. And it came, wanted to meet with me about the possibility for his project to build or have built a dog park. So Jason, you did, oh, there you are. So you did send me some, I could not open it. I did email you and said I couldn't open it. Yeah, you'll have to shut off one of yours. You'll have to shut because you're on the screen twice. So you'll either have to get off of your phone, maybe? So, but you, yeah, you know what? You'll need to unmute. Here, let me see. Try to unmute the one that has your, your picture on it, your face. Or Julie, do you have to do that?
No, he has to do it himself. It looks like he just did.
Okay, good. Okay, so Jason, Jim Conway is from the Board of Selectmen. And there's a reporter here from Voices and then Peter Filos is here. He's Chairman of our Planning Commission, but he's here for something else. So, one of the other selectmen is not at the meeting. But if you could start, and like I said, I could not open what you sent me because I would have sent it around. But was from Google.
I think actually I shared it with you right when I got home today. So it might be there.
All right, let's see. Uh, no, the last thing I have with your name is I can't seem to get permission to open this presentation.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Here, wait, let me, I was looking maybe at the wrong thing. No, 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 I didn't get it. Maybe let me, I mean, let me check my junk mail. No. I don't have it. So that, that's, that's okay. I would like you to just explain, you know, from the beginning.
Okay.
Who you are, I did say you were a student at POG Senior. You need to do a senior project to graduate. You will be a senior in September.
Yes.
And you live in Roxbury and you have an interest in having a dog park. So take it away. You can somehow we'll get, you know, plans. I mean, we're not, I don't believe. We'll try to make a decision one way or another, but it's not going to be where you're going to have it or anything I wouldn't imagine tonight. So, I mean, there's, there's more to do. Okay?
Okay. So, um, thank you very much for meeting me, first of all. Obviously, I am going into my senior year. And my senior project idea was to build a dog park in Roxbury. My thought was that in Bridgewater, there is a dog park in one of their park areas by the soccer field. And I was thinking that it would be nice to have one in Roxbury. And so I thought of places to put it, like Apple Lane and somewhere near the market. And I was thinking of building it, not only because of, well, it would be easier for people who live in Roxbury to go to a park in Roxbury. But also because it can allow members of our community and their dogs to interact with each other. And it can allow our members to meet one another and get to know one another. And it could be especially helpful for some elderly or people who just aren't able to walk their dogs to let them off the leash and run around a bit. And that would be a good way for them to get exercise. Whereas, you know, walking their dogs might not be something that everybody can do. So if there was the dog park, then they could run around and their owners wouldn't have to keep them on the leash so they could get more exercise and they wouldn't have to, you know, worry about maybe people don't, who don't like dogs or who aren't good with dogs. And that would prevent, you know, some interactions that, you know, maybe the owners or some other people don't really want. People who, again, aren't good with dogs or just don't like dogs or uncomfortable. Having a park would be a good way to keep them closed in and still allow them to be off the leash. I was thinking for the area somewhere, I have three areas in mind for Apple Lane Park. It's a little, I'm not sure if I can share the picture that I have. But, um, I can do my best to describe it. One of the areas is.
This is Julie. Um, you have sharing rights. I just gave them to you. So feel free.
Yep. I just, I see, I see it. Because.
Okay.
Did it come in through an email? Is that why I just opened it?
I think so, yes.
Okay. So, oh, it's came to me, so I, I won't forward it to the two of you.
Okay, so it's sent to you?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Here, wait a minute. Okay, just sent it to all of you. The first one, is there, is there another one? Let me see. Possible dog park areas. Did you get that in your email?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right.
I didn't get it yet, but I'm assuming it's coming.
And Peter, you know what? I mean, we'd have to do an 824 for something like this anyway.
So it's okay. I'll, I'll just, I'll just listen.
Here, wait a minute. Julie Katie.
There we go. There we go.
Trying to get rid of the, maybe not.
Yeah, you could. Can you make that bigger or no?
I'm trying to, but there.
Actually, it would, yeah, go down. Those are the, the three spots.
This, because it won't let me save it right now.
Okay.
Actually, I might be able to share my, I'm not sure what was happening with it. It just wasn't working, but I could try it again.
Well, who just scrolled up and down?
That was me and I just backed it out.
Okay, well, in that case, you keep on doing it because that's, we can see it that way.
I'm gonna give Jason a chance to share his screen. You might get a better, you love it.
I mean, I could identify as to where the potential area of the dog park would be. I think it's that area that's outlined in red. Is that correct?
Well, there's three here. Jason's gonna be able to.
Here we go.
Way better. All right.
Okay, so this is a picture taken from Google Earth of just above the park. Here is the, I don't know if you can see my mouse. I think this is the, I believe the, maybe this is the baseball field, but the baseball field is somewhere around here. The basketball court is here and this is the playground area. So this area right here is one of the areas I had in mind. I went out and measured it and it is 66 by 200 feet across. And I was thinking this would be a good area because it's flat. There's not like a slope. So people who maybe aren't able to walk their dogs for specific reasons. Like maybe if they're the elderly or people who just aren't able to walk them, they won't have to worry about trying to go up a steep hill or anything. The second one I had in mind is right here, which is 70 by 200 feet. This also is a nice, flat, open area. Then my third area I had over here, which is 100 by 200 feet. And just for better reference, it is 75 feet away from the basketball court right here. So that would give the park and the basketball court some space.
May I just comment on that for a moment?
Yeah.
I just, just looking at these three areas, the one that seems to be least intrusive to what goes on there. For example, the, the first one, 66 by 200, it's very close to the the play, the play area. Is that correct?
It's closest to the play area, but for me, it's, it's, it's if you ever wanted to expand parking.
Yeah, so the, the, well, it's near parking, but the other one that doesn't really obstruct or interfere with any other activities might be that 70 by 200. As far away from the ball court, as far away from, you know, some concern about having a dog park next to where children are playing and so on, you know. Again, I can't see in detail as to where it is, but it seems to me that the 70 by 100 area is far enough away from all activities where there's some privacy that to other activities or other individuals that are either playing in the, in the play court or playing on the basketball court and so on.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, that, I mean, that does, it's, it's flat there because I remember it being a slope, a little bit of a slope. I mean, this is an old picture, but, well, it's not too, too old, but it's, uh.
I'm pretty sure there actually is a little bit of a slope at the yellow, the 70 by 200 feet.
Yep.
Um, I know the area that is most flat is the blue 100 by 200 feet.
Okay. All right, so you've, you've been at other dog parks. It said Southbury, you said Bridgewater. And so what are the size of, what are the size of those?
Um, I think the size of the one in Bridgewater was 137 by 100 feet. And I've been there a lot and I noticed that it's a pretty good size, although if you stand at like, let's say it's this red one right here and you were to throw like a ball or something, you could throw it almost, not really with a lot of effort and it would almost clear the fence. So I was thinking it should probably be a bit bigger that way, like bigger dogs or just dogs with more energy, you know, can run farther. Because while it is a really good park, it is a little small. I've actually been to the one in the New Milford and that one is about probably bigger than a soccer field, actually. And, um, there's an area dedicated to smaller dogs and one is like bigger dogs. But I don't think that I would need one of those. Um, I was just thinking about that area just now, actually. I just remembered. Um, that area, I'm not sure exactly how big it is because I didn't quite get to measuring it. But I know it's a, well, like I said, probably a bit bigger than a soccer field. So that would give the dogs a lot of room to run around. And just get all.
They would have a lot more people that could use it.
One, one more question on that. Is there any particular reason why you have everything in a rectangular format? It almost seems to me that if it was square, like say 100 by 100 or 150 by 150, you would have, you know, the dogs meeting and gelling the center of, of the space. You wouldn't have the ability to, for example, as you mentioned, somebody throwing a ball, you know, over the, over the fence to either side of that rectangle. A square configuration seems to be more of a, an easier way to distribute the dogs or to have them run and, and use the entire space.
Well, I was thinking, since a rectangle is, it's longer on this side. So that would allow for more room to, you know, you could just, if you're standing, I don't know, right around here or something and you would throw the ball that way, there would be much more room. Whereas a square, there isn't as much room to throw, like you can only go through from one side and it's all the same. Whereas rectangle, you can get a bit longer with them. So that's, that's just kind of what I was going for.
No, that makes sense. I was just curious.
Can, can I ask a question, Jason? What type of material, what type of fencing is going to be used?
Um, actually, I think that's in one of my slides. Uh, yeah, um, let me see here.
What do they have in Bridgewater? Chain link?
Um, no, it is a, I think it's a wood, a wood fence with wire around it so they can't crawl underneath or through. It's like a wire mesh and wooden rail.
It used to be the, like a riding ring over there, as I remember. And then they just put that wire mesh around the whole inside of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be like a, like a split, split rail fence with the, with the lower section being covered with a, with a wire mesh? Is that it?
Yeah.
That they have over in Bridgewater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, what, I forget what you asked, Peter? Oh, no, Jim, you asked, what was the material?
Right. And if, what's the material that Jason is planning on using?
Right.
Um, probably make it more with wood and wire mesh, the same as Bridgewater. So wooden rails with the wire mesh in between.
Okay, there's, there's quite a bit of expense. 200 by 100 or whatever we had. The, the three rail fence sections are up around 50 bucks a section now. And then the wire and there's a, quite a bit of expense to this.
Well, he's got on this slide, he's saying it would be about, if it was 100 by 200, the fencing and the posts would be about 33 plus $100. The wood car.
Do posts, that might also work. That could cut down on the cost too.
Okay, so what were you thinking about the cost? How, how are you looking to get the cost for this paid for?
Um, I was thinking to raise money for this. I was thinking doing some kind of like fundraising or a grant. Um, I had a couple ideas for a fundraiser. I'm not sure if the people are, who I would want to be involved with it are okay. I haven't asked yet. But I have some ideas.
Okay. I mean, I know this is your first, the very beginning of this, but, um, and so if you have ideas for that, there's also, you know, a grant, because I used to sit on the Senior Project Foundation. You know, that they, people make donations to that to help people fund some of their projects. They don't give them everything that they might need, but if there, there's another avenue to, you definitely would, should apply for that. I see you have like Home Depot and, uh, you know, the other places, maybe Rings End, Lowe's, they, they may make donations, you know, you have to ask for sure. But, so what I want to know is, what do you, do you, do you know that the public would want something like this? Have you talked to people in this town that would like to see that? Or have you, you know, spoken to people at these other ones and, you know, me personally, yeah, there's, there's a lot of dogs here in town. And I know a couple of people, because I did bring it up, said that they, they would love to see a dog park. But I, as for the whole town, I don't know where the town would stand with that. And the other, one other thing that I wanted to just throw out to Jim while, like, while we're talking. You know, we do have down in Sherman Park, but the problem with that is, I mean, it is away from everything. There's no, we'd have to probably do something about adding to, opening up a little bit more space for parking. But it's a nice area. It doesn't have facilities and I, you know, but it is a nice place. It's a nice, it would be a nice place to put it.
Oh, where is Sherman Park?
Yep, Sherman Park. And I mean, maybe, maybe it's not a nice, good place to put it, but it's, it's down into another section of town towards Southbury. It's down South Street.
It's actually an area, Sherman Park is something that Roxbury should look into developing and make proper use of because it was left to the town for park purposes.
Right.
And.
Water too.
And, yeah, it's kind of remote, but it's really nice down there and it's flat. And it's a nice spot.
Land Trust built a little trail around it.
Yeah.
And it's, um.
It's, it's a great spot. And if people want the use of a dog park, they will find it. They'll find it. They'll, and I totally agree with Apple Lane, but I think it does have to be out and back. Not right up by the road in the parking. I have no problem out and back. But there's other places in town. Sherman Park being one would be an excellent dog park.
Yeah.
And we could put facilities, portable facilities or whatever necessary and start utilizing that area.
I mean, it is out of the way and so, um, it's not that this should be out of the way, but it's out of the way as far as, you know, being able to check up on it. It's not as easier to check up on as, as if being at the park because it's more open, et cetera. So if this was going to be here, I think the, yeah, my, one of my preferences would be the 70 by 200, I mean, in that area. Because it's on this, it's on the roadside of the walking trail. It wouldn't interfere too, too much with parking for, you know, like when the picking and fiddling, because they take up a large area for parking when they have that every year. And then if someone was renting the pavilion for a wedding, people are, people are out of the way there, you know, they, they're not, and like Peter said, for children on the playground. So it would, it's, you know, it's farther away. Back by the basketball court, you know, it's still, if someone was renting the pavilion and they, you know, people have put tents up towards the back of the pavilion and they were having, you know, a wedding or, or whatever. The, the, that would be in, that would be in the way. So that, I mean, it's nice to have it at the park for parking and facilities for whoever's using it. But it, it was, it's also away from the pavilion, which I think it should be, just for people renting for parties, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm, these were just some of like the ideas that I had in mind. If there's some places that I thought of. I'm open to wherever you think would be best, really.
Yeah.
You know, getting back to Sherman Park, dog owners might appreciate Sherman Park more than a real public area. So their dogs are more remote and on their own. Because you won't have any dealings with public activities, playgrounds, baseball games, soccer games.
People jogging by and they're barking.
Yeah. I, I tell you what, Sherman Park, I want to see something happen down there. And if this is a, a start, it's a pretty good spot because it's so private, secluded, quiet, no houses, nobody would complain about anything. And you're on your.
It's your boat launch. We have boat launch down there.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, because, and I, and I would rather see it there than across the street at the, at the, in Munson Meadow.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where exactly is Sherman Park?
Everybody asks that, Jason. It's okay.
It is, if you go all the way down South Street and turn onto Lower River Road and a right on Lower Falls Road.
Correct, it's.
So it's, you're going South Street towards Southbury. You're passing Minor Bridge Road. I don't know if you know this section of town.
Yeah.
And so you're going, get past Minor Bridge Road. And I think it's the next right is Lower River Road. And then it's a quick right onto Lower Falls Road. And if you go down there, it's just, it's a big open field. And then you will come to a boat ramp if you keep going straight.
It's really a nice.
Lillinona. It's Lake.
It's a nice spot in Roxbury that's a forgotten gem.
So I think what we have to do so that he can either move forward or find another project is to say, would we like to see a dog park in Roxbury? You know, he's gonna have to come up with, where is the best place, I would think? Between those two options, you know, you can go down and check that out. But, um, you know, maybe we, I mean, do you think we have to poll the public or this is just something that he's gonna have, he can at least start to work on and figure out, you know, money, what it's gonna look like. You're gonna have to go to Wetlands, you know, Wetlands Commission and.
Can, can Jason poll the public in some way through Voices or something to get some public input on the dog park in Roxbury? And if he has support, then obviously we're gonna support it. And the location is up to us.
Yep. Well, you know what? Um, our code red that we just switched over for our alert system, you can have a response on that. And, you know, I can get with Jason for what the message is and, and see what happens with that.
Yeah, let's see where, where the people in town, how they feel about this. And I'll support it 100%. Uh, if the people think this is needed, then we'll figure out where to put it.
All right. Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So, I mean, I don't know, do you, do you have any idea, other ideas on how you can poll the public? Jason, I mean, I can help you figure this out as far as getting a yes or no. It's just gonna be a yes or a no from, we can put a message out, hit one for yes, two for no. That's what it is. Hit one for yes, two for no, that's what it is. Alright, you know.
That might work.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, well, we can do that soon, Peter, you have anything else?
Oh, not really, I, I think the uh, the idea of the park to me seems to be the most appealing one. You know, to have it at the park, like, no matter, no matter how, how you slice the pie, if, if, it's an activity. A, a, a dog park is an activity. That uh is best to have in an area that's a little more secluded than have it in the middle of a lot of other activities that take place. You know, so I think that, that would be, and I think owners of dogs would prefer. To be at a place that is more secluded than have it, have the chance of interference, barking and other people uh. Uh, driving by, walking by and so on. So I think uh that uh, to me, that's, the, the park idea is a great one.
Yeah. I mean, Jason, I can go down there with you and show you, you know. Just let me know what your schedule is and I can take you down there so that you can see it. And then uh. And we can go from there, so two things we need to do is. Is to first just poll the public. And then two, uh, go down there and look at that. I haven't been down there in a while myself, you gotta bring a, you know, tape measures, see, see that. You know, the one hundred by two hundred.
Oh, it'll fit, yeah.
Yeah, it'll fit.
Yeah.
It's just, it's where.
It's a nice area.
It is, it's a nice area. The public works, we go down there, but we moved the driveway and it's right along the cliff of, cliff area, and that is in back. At this, in, in this whole section, and we have, you know. Stumps there, we, and we burn there, we have um controlled burns and things like that, and we also. Uh, mixed gravel, so that one, you know, and that's just over a hump in the, in the park area. But um, other than that. The rest of it's flat, pretty flat, wide open. And there is a trail that goes around on top of this cliff area down by the water. And around by the boat launch and then back to this spot, so people. Um, and I don't know that a lot of people use that, that, but that was a senior project by Jamie Curran, actually. And he built this, so, um, alright, so. If you wanna, if, if you wanna get me um, a time. No, uh, uh, I will get with you. And we can send out the uh email, um, the blast, the phone, it's by phone. And just see what the, what the public thinks.
Okay, I can go uh Sherman Park probably sometime this weekend to measure and then I can email you.
Okay. That's good, my weekend is chock full, so if you want to go down there, that's fine, and there is a fence. But that's in the driveway, you can walk, you can get in there, you can get in there, okay?
Is there some, is there some signage that says Sherman Park or, or no?
No, not, um, I don't think so, no, nope. So maybe we, that's part of it, maybe.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
It's a secret.
It's a secret, it is, but it's so.
It, it, isn't it near uh Roxbury Falls on, on the other side of there?
No.
No? Then I don't know where it is. We need some, we need some signage, Barbara.
Gotta go down South Street, so. Um, anyway, okay, so the, the plan is one, you can go down there. Two, we'll get together and come up with a message and get um, the, just to poll the people, yes or no. If it's yes. Uh, we, the selectmen will decide that it, it's there, you'll have to go to Wetlands, the Wetlands Commission to be able to build it. The, the selectman will have to ask the planning commission, which um, Mr. Philos is chairman of. Because anything that we do with municipal property. We have to get an okay from the planning commission. So um. You know, those are the steps that you would have to do, and then you would have to look into your fundraising and, and um. Uh, we, we'd wanna see what it's gonna look like, you're gonna have to have a sketch or something and the materials. And maybe you could include just a sign, not that you would have to do that, but. You know, maybe that's something we work on getting.
Sounds good.
Down there, alright.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Alright, you take care, I'll email you, alright, get some dates, I mean uh. When we can talk, I'll email you.
Okay.
Alright, Jason, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay. Moving on to the. Next item is, okay. Approval of the Affordable Housing Re- Resolution and, and absolutely just to talk about it. We do have to have an affordable housing plan. I, I was telling somebody today, it's by August, that's not, that the ARP plan is by the end of August. We have to have an affordable housing plan mandated by the state by June of twenty twenty two. They are offering grants. For people to, for towns. To have someone co- uh come in and help with this whole process. And uh, and if we do. I think the grants are up to fifteen thousand dollars. But this is what, this is what we have to do, and so I was talking with Jocelyn from the cog, our cog, and she's. Actually doing about three towns or four towns, as they've applied for the grants. And um. But basically you have to set up a steering committee. So, um, you know, we have to do it. And I think that um, I've gotten a calls, I'm all over the place here, but I have gotten a couple of calls from people that are very interested in that. Housing authority. And maybe. People from that. The planning commission. Um, I don't know how you feel about zoning, but uh being on this um. On this steering committee. You know, make, someone from the selectman's office can certainly ban it, and. Because it is, if you look at the tasks, I think that, can you see, if you can see them. You have to do a housing needs data assessment. There um, meet with the town's housing plan steering committee. Uh, which would be, I, I would say this committee that we're gonna hopefully set up. Community housing needs survey, I mean, that's a, that's something that you're gonna have to send out to the public. So it would be nice to have help to do that. And um, like I said, Jocelyn has led this in other towns or is in the process of doing it with other towns. So what do you um? What would? And be, and tonight, what I'm looking to do is that we have to sign. We have to sign um, a resolution. Saying that we've had this meeting. No, I can't. Um, that we had this meeting and that we will. Uh, form, you know, a subcommittee that we will apply for this grant. And that um, the selectman will give me the authority to sign this and apply for this grant. So I, I think it's the way to go, I see other, other towns are doing it, um, you know, if. I see the town of Cornwall, they're focusing on, we need affordable rental units, that's what we want in our plan. Now, I do know a couple of, uh, I saw anyway that a couple of towns maybe have finished theirs. Uh, we certainly can look at those, or planning can look at those. Steps that have to take place that, that are sitting here in front of you, so is it something planning wants to do with help? And the help would be, you know, po- Jocelyn, or we can look for someone else. Um, but the money does come from the state.
So Barbara, getting back to the money.
Yeah.
Uh, up to fifteen thousand can be requested.
Correct.
Does fifteen thousand cover the whole tab, or we're gonna expect it to add to it?
Well, um, J- uh, Jocelyn, she said, you know, this is a project financing plan and the budget. And she said, I would um. The Department of Housing share of the grant would be about ten thousand. Maybe the town would put in fifteen hundred dollars, so that it would be, you know, eleven five for the total. Uh, and in the, in some of the, I think, I don't know if it's in this thing that I'm looking at right here. But in the uh, resolution, I believe, it's, you know, anything that you don't use gets sent back. So um.
So that should see it through, the project through to the end.
Right. Right. So, I mean, she had some costs here, like this data collection, a market study analysis. Yeah, the Department of Housing, it's a thousand dollars, community engagement. You know, there's gonna be meetings, et cetera, fifty six hundred dollars for whomever is going to do all that. Printing and publication, two hundred dollars, then draft the affordable housing plan for adoption. Is twenty eight hundred dollars. And then, so the town, um, like she's saying fifteen hundred dollars would be town. The town's staff support, maybe pay, paying fourteen hundred dollars because it's. Uh, you know, someone's gotta go and take the minutes and all of that, and we would have to put in for that. Um, and then she put in a hundred dollars for refreshments for public meetings, a hundred dollars. Um, mapping is five hundred dollars, so the town's share that she's saying this is. Probably a good thing to put in, it's not saying that you have to do that, but. For staff support, maybe fourteen hundred dollars and refreshments, a hundred dollars is fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah.
Just one, just one comment, if I compare that to the uh efforts that we had with the uh, 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 Plan of Conservation Development.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we did the whole thing for about, was it a total of fourteen thousand? I think was, was the final number. And it appears to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it appears to me that this ought to be uh less costly. In terms of putting together than what we had to do with the Plan of Conservation Development. Uh, furthermore, just to go back to as to who should be involved, I mean, our POSD makes reference to. The endeavor to um, create affordable housing and perhaps a affordable housing plan, I think it also makes even reference to a. Housing authority, so I think a lot of, and, and the POSD is already in there, that uh, that we have. Where the town has decided to, that would be the plan to go, we go forward on that issue. And uh, also the plan itself, as I understand it, um, it doesn't have. Doesn't need to have any specifics in it, it's more of a general planning. And a goal to achieve a number of housing units, a percentage of existing and so on. Uh, so again, the consultants can tell us what that is in comparisons to what other towns have done. But you know, I feel that the fif- that fourteen, that fifteen thousand dollars that we can request for. For a grant, it should, that should probably cover it all, it almost seems that way.
And I mean, she's saying it's gonna be like ten, that's really what we would request. Or um, I could tell her, you know, we could change some of these numbers. If she feels that it's, they're, they're mandating us to do this, they're offering this money. Do we have to put any in, you know, like to take the fifteen hundred back out? And put it on the Department of Housing side, um. And, and go from there and request it, and if we don't need it. We can say, these are the things we'd like you to help us with, and if we don't need it, it goes back, I mean, it goes back.
Oh, this is all interesting because we've known this for many years. We're gonna hear the same, same stuff that we've heard for years. The need.
I think you're making, you're making reference to our smart growth activities.
Certainly, yeah. And, and we all know. It starts with, it starts with who's gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta donate some land, okay, then somebody's gotta donate some money. To build these things. And it's not taxpayer money that's gonna do it. Uh, you can have all the housing authorities in the world, but unless somebody steps up to the plate with deep pockets, it's not gonna happen.
They don't care, they want you to have a written plan.
Yeah, that, that's a point I was made, I made some other time, you know, as all said and done, only private enterprise. That uh has a profit, a profitable situation to build this will enter into the process. So from our perspective, all we can do really is to have a general plan for that. Uh, that we are, we were committed to pursue and continue to endeavor to have. Affordable housing based on their criteria, and then it's, it's up to the general um, construction industry. If you wanna. Call that, that they come up and, and, and engage in it. And uh donating land, for example, that's, that's only gonna happen if there's a um, a, a tax benefit to the donor. Uh, you know, to do this, so there's a whole bunch of steps that all wind up with. We only can get this done, as Jim just pointed out, we don't, we, we can't build this, it has to be done by an outside source. And it has to be done on a profit basis, so you know, uh, or it, it will not happen, on top of that. Um, there are certain municipal water systems required, certain municipal water required, there's uh. No septic requirements that uh, that, that you get involved with multifamily, uh, you also have the question, are we talking about? Uh, unit ownership, are we talking about rental? You know, uh, so, we, we would have to, zoning would have to deal with uh, the uh. The multifamily uh concept, you know, so, a, a lot of it is, is zoning, obviously, uh, then it comes to, to planning. To make a determination if it fits into our plan of development.
We've already made, we made. Towards rentals and I, I've been talking rentals for over five to eight years. And um, I was told at one point. That rentals weren't gonna cut it, it was all about ownership, now they're back to talking rentals.
Back, back to rental.
And uh, yeah, so we're creating more rentals. And you can do that in a town like Roxbury. Much easier than you can do ownership and multifamily ownerships and, and all that. We have plenty of options for rentals, uh, and there again, the affordability. Of the, the rentals, even in Roxbury are tough to meet. It's, it's down around twelve hundred bucks a month, and every time I see a rental, it's two thousand plus. And.
Yeah.
But anyway, we can create the rentals, but the people can have the right to ask what they want for them.
That's right.
And again, it's, it's a matter of profitability to the uh, to the people develop, you know, so it's, it's. That's what it boils down to, but that doesn't mean that we can't have, uh, create a platform where that would, would could fit off. You know, and that the platform happens to be the um, affordable housing policy that we're going to endeavor to create. Uh, whether we do it through a housing authority, whether we do it to uh, uh, steering committees, et cetera, groups of uh, advisory groups. Anyway, anyway that other towns have done it and it was successful, I think we should not try and to reinvent the wheel. And just go and see what neighboring towns have done that has been successful, I think a lot of them are in the beginning of that process, there are very few that really have gone through it. Full, full speed, and I'm not so sure how successful some of these towns were that actually created that, I mean. If you're dealing with rural housing and you create four or five units uh, in, in a three or four year time period. Uh, that's okay, you, you created affordable housing, but it's just, it probably will not. Need a certain, I don't know if there's gonna be a requirement as to how many affordable housing units you ought to have, rental or ownership. Uh, based on, uh, on the um, uh, on the size of town.
First, the first step is Falls Village, um, Sharon, Kent, they all have multifamily. Structures going up, Falls Village has been in the paper a bunch, they're putting, I think it's Falls Village, it's over by Lime Rock. Um, and they're putting up a multifamily. Three-story structure with apartments in it, and it's, it's had some resistance. But that's their, that's where they're headed, uh, and, and we're not even close to that in Roxbury.
But if you, so if you look at. Um, number eight of what we're supposed to be doing. This plan has to include the housing needs data, a summary of the resident input. Goals and strategies, and then you can revise the draft plan. Based on local reviews and input to create a final document, so.
I think we can do that, we can do that, let's do that, we've done it before, let's do it again. We, we've been there.
We've got, we've, we're mandated to do it, so let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Well, you know, I mean, projecting as to what. Success will be of that, this.
Look, you've had affordable housing regulations and zoning forever, and I mean.
Yeah, never been used.
It never once has been used.
I don't know that any of us really wanna take this on as being leader of it, so if we can get the grant, which that's what they're saying, apply for this money. So if we can get the grant, which that's what they're saying, apply for this money.
Okay, it doesn't cost us anything.
Right, right. I would like in, um, a resolution. So Jim, it's gonna have to be a motion, um, resolved that the board of selectmen may accept planning grant funds to prepare and adopt an affordable housing plan under the provisions of, um, state statute eight dash 30 J or section whatever of the Connecticut general statutes. Further, and Julie, I will give you this, further resolve that Barbara Henry as first selectment of the town of Roxbury is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town to do and perform all acts which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
And yes, I will make that motion, but I'm not gonna repeat what you said.
That's right.
I will make that motion.
Now, this is awkward, so I'm going to second that. Um, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. I will get that set up. Peter has to, um, certify this motion tomorrow and I will send it in. I'll talk to Jocelyn, tell her to change the budget and that's it. So, but, and moving forward, I mean, uh, we are going to have to decide who is gonna be the steering committee. Are we looking to have the COG be involved or are we gonna try and find something?
What happened to the little group that we met, uh, a month ago? And, um,
Yep.
I haven't heard back from them. Jocelyn was with us, Charlie Stoffaker, Sue Stoffaker. And Charlie was going to take the ball.
See, he did come in to see me, you know, they're interested in moving this forward. I think I have a couple of other names. I know that, um, I, I put something in my email blast about anyone that might be interested in, uh, housing authority.
Right, yeah.
I have someone from Wetlands that said they're interested. And so if we can, I think planning, don't you think planning should like be the lead on this or, or zoning?
I, well, housing authority is a housing authority. They're their own little thing.
But that, I, that, that is it, but we have to have a steering committee. We have to have a housing plan steering committee to get this thing off the ground. So.
I think that, that should involve people equally almost, uh, between planning and zoning. There's no doubt about it. I mean, pretty much how we, Jim, how we handled, uh, the, uh, our, our, you know, P O C D and our, our, you know, smart growth activities. Uh, so.
So, so I just wanna make sure that I understand that we're gonna apply for this grant, obviously. And then when it comes in, um, we can work with Jocelyn and say, okay, these are people that would be to make up a, a steering committee. Uh, these are people that are interested in a housing authority. It is not formed yet. But maybe this'll interest people. We want planning and zoning involved.
Probably, Peter, it should be chairman and vice chairman. If the vice chairman so choose and you, it'd be four of us. To make it, go, make it go forward.
Yeah. That's what they're saying, actually, if they're suggesting people of who should be on your housing plan steering committee, a local housing trust or authority, if it's applicable. Planning and zoning, that someone from selectmen, um, an economic development commission, which we don't have, and a sustainable C T committee. I don't know what happened to that committee. And they also said a local Realtor could be in on it.
I, I can, I can, I can plead it. I, I'm licensed, I'm a licensed Realtor, you know that.
I can do both.
All right.
We should have, we should have five, right? Four doesn't sound right.
Yeah. Um, or maybe even, so it's one, two, three, four.
I think, um, I have one on zoning that might bring a lot to the table.
Okay.
Uh, myself, Kim Tester and Bill Horgan.
Okay. Then, you know, that's, that's three. And, uh, and Peter, you can throw it out to people on planning.
Yeah, bring it up at our next, uh, next meeting at, uh, which is coming up and, um.
And I will contact people from, um, the steering, I mean, um, the people that said they're interested in this housing authority.
Okay.
Okay, right.
And then maybe they'll, maybe they'll gel and get together and really try to move it forward if they see that we're, we're gonna be working on this. And that they're a part of it.
May I just recap now? Well, Jim, you're, you're proposing, uh, a steering committee. Uh, I'm the chairman, you're the vice chairman. Is that what you're saying? Or vice, I don't care.
Oh, no, 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 of the committee? No, I just, I was offering myself as chairman of zoning and Kim Tester as vice chairman of zoning. And then yourself as chairman of planning. And once we get the group of people together, we'll select a chairman.
Oh, okay, all right. So what, what would, what would the, um, the three of us do? I mean, would we, we, we were just trying to select a steering committee? Or create one?
We're, yeah.
We're kinda naming the steering committee right now. It's like, it's gonna be three from zoning, there could be three from planning. And there can be three or four from this, the people that are interested in the housing authority, at least three of them, I think.
At least three.
To be, to be frank with you, um, it's more efficient if we have one person from each one of the commissions. And we, we have that, you know, by what Jim just said. So I'm not sure if you wanna, I mean, it's fine to do this. But I always found that, uh, if we have at least expertise from all these different areas by one person. And they can bring that back to, you know, to respective commissioners if they want to, and then we can, that's pretty much how we handle it with our steering committee. We discussed it, it came up at the next meeting of the respective, uh, commission. Uh, and then their opinions were voiced and they came up at the next meeting of the steering committee. So that we kind of developed a, um, you know, cohesive plan to go forward.
But the, the, the problem, um, and I get that, and it's smaller, sometimes is better. I don't think that this is too huge because we're trying to see and get off the ground a housing authority or housing, whatever, um, what is it?
Housing authority, yes.
Yeah, I think.
Not a housing trust, a housing authority. And so if you can, uh, if you don't keep them on the sidelines right now, you may start, you know, they may have separate meetings after this or while it's going on. And they can run with it, but if you're, because this thing is gonna take months and.
I like that because we can pass the torch to them.
Correct.
Get involved and Peter may.
Good point, good point.
Just two of you and two from zoning and two or three from the interested people. And then pretty soon we can hand it over to them.
Yep.
What is it that, what is the deadline again, Barbara, we have to have this by?
The plan has to be to the state by June of 22.
Okay.
And, uh, so.
So, uh, the next step is that everyone informs the people that we have just mentioned that, uh, they're on the steering committee or that, you know.
So I guess the selectman can call a meeting of the steering committee now. Um, we can talk about that at our selectmen's meeting. The, the August is not gonna be good. Um, it's, I mean, it's not generally a good month to try and get people together, people.
Vacation.
I don't know, this COVID thing's picking up in the state again. Who knows what's gonna happen?
Now, doesn't Jocelyn come in on this with her part? I mean.
And you know what?
When she's ready, we're ready.
And that she can put out a doodle poll and get people.
Yeah.
Okay.
When she's ready to move, we're ready to move. We got our group.
Okay, good, good. All right. Thank you. Okay, now, one more, one more quick gazebo. Um, this is a, I, I put this on here because I know that they're, they're waiting. Um, oh, shoot, I, I did get a picture sent to me. This is terrible that I don't have it. However, there is a, a very, very nice gazebo that is at someone's property that someone here in town is working at. They want to, they, they want to, to get the, the gazebo dismantled and taken away. And this person said, this is really an opportunity for the town to have something really nice. And he said, I'll take care of dismantling it, et cetera. The wood is in great shape. Um, I, I, I did ask him, you know, is it, um, uh, pressure treated? What, you know, what are we getting here? And if I get an okay, I, I'll go out and look at it myself or any other person can look at it just to make sure that it is something that's feasible to, to bring in.
I'll look, I'll take a look at it with you.
And, um, so then again, okay, it's a gazebo that is, it's pretty large. I mean.
Where's, where's it gonna go?
Right. That's why I'm.
But there's, there's one thought, I, you know, that occurred to me. I mean, if it would go at, uh, Montsammetto, for example, and you have it placed, uh, in the corner somewhere, it would be a perfect thing to, for example, have, uh, holiday music, uh, during the holiday season, you know.
Thinking this corner, this back corner, I don't want it around the tree, but this back corner, um, of Montsammetto, it, it's not wet. Um, you could have, you know, you could have readings or whatever. The library might be able to.
Gazebo's in corners. Gazebo's gotta be out in the open where you can see them all, all sides.
Well, you wouldn't actually necessarily have to put it in a corner there. I mean, there's enough, you could leave it far out of the corner to, I know what you mean, but it's, it would be more like a stage having it there as opposed to having it, uh, in the center of a, uh, of a park, for example, you know, so, um.
Well, you know, I see the library, they, they, but they borrow a tent and it's up because they wanna have some summer programs that are, maybe could go back behind the.
That, that's a nice, beautiful, open area for a gazebo. And you could go out and get your book and read.
Uh, good point.
Yeah.
So would we want it, what, now, I'm not talking about the field, but have you seen where the tent is right now?
Yeah, I saw the tent, yeah.
I mean, in that area or?
No, gazebo would be perfect by the library.
Yeah, I think it would. Now that I'm thinking about it, because, because the tent is there and, um, yeah.
Contemplation, contemplation area.
Yep. Another contemplation. Well, anyway, we can make a final decision because I think it's out a little ways because it's a, it'll be a job to get this thing dismantled, I guess.
Who's gonna assemble it? Are they also going to assemble it or just?
They will assemble it. I know he said, asked me, you know, hey, you think the public works could help me a little? I said, uh, you know what? I guarantee you, we could probably get some people that would donate their time to help.
Yeah.
I mean, I can look for that.
I like volunteer.
I will have a picture of it for our selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
All right. And then, uh, but, but we can move forward with it.
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Okay.
By the library, yeah, be an addition.
So I.
Before we sign off, can I ask one technical question?
Yep.
All evening, you folks have seen me, we've heard each other, my screen is all pixels. I can't see myself.
Really? We could see you.
I know. Is there something, Julie, is there something I should do?
No, I think it's just the strength of your, of your signal off the, from the wifi, uh.
Okay, so I, I'm quite sure I have a weak signal, but you can see me and I can't see myself.
You're actually very clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, if you go up into the corner, the right corner, and there's the three little dots in a blue box.
Yep, yep, yep.
Um.
I just, I got a big hand, a big hand up there.
Here, wait a minute.
I don't know what happened. Well, okay, well, it's.
So that you have a big hand.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the hand. I don't have an arrow anymore. Oh, I got an arrow, hang on.
Well, wait a minute, it says hide self-view is the last choice.
Where do you, oh yeah, I see that.
Did you, do you, so undo?
Well, I just hid my self-view.
Oh.
At work, okay, enough. That's okay. You, I don't wanna keep you folks any. It's the first time it's happened in 18 months of Zoom.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Then up at that, so when you hid yourself, because I just did it and I said, oh my gosh, where am I? There's up at the very top, it says, uh, come, like, come back with your show self-view. So maybe it is your.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna, I got that. No, I'm still pixelled.
Huh.
Okay, well, this is, this device is very, very old and, um, I've used it before here. I just never had this issue. But if you can see me, you can hear me, I can see you folks.
Yep.
But, uh, anyway, okay, okay.
So I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Good meeting. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Peter, thanks for joining us. Julie, thank you.
No problem.
All right.
See you, Peter.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Have a nice weekend.
Yeah, it's gonna be a nice one.